if you'd like to lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good girl, Paul. Davis? Travis? Loewendowski?
Here.
Alex?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Lopez, Kneba?
Here.
Okay, we will start with our National Merit Scholarship recognition.
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to recognize four LTHS seniors for earning the recognition of commended status by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Our students are Shims Alshabani, Evan Littman, Patrick Munkel, and Logan Namison. Can those students please come up to the front, please? We can space out a little bit here. Before I begin reading the resolution, I just wanted to let everyone know that the National Merit Test was taken by approximately 1.5 million students. And our four students here earned the recognition of commended status because they tested in approximately the top third of 1.5 million students nationwide. How about a round of applause? I'm going to read the resolution, and then I have individual certificates. Corey Ford. This resolution is recognizing Shims Alshabani, Evan Littman, Patrick Munkel, Logan Namison for achieving commended recognition status from the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Whereas Shims Alshabani, Evan Littman, Patrick Munkel, Logan Namison, current senior students at Lockport Township High School District 205, has achieved commended recognition status by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Whereas Shims Alshabani, Evan Littman, Patrick Munkel, Logan Namison has brought honor and distinction to themselves, their family, school, and community by achieving this respected status. Whereas Shims Alshabani, Evan Littman, Patrick Munkel, and Logan Namison were aided and guided in this achievement by their parents and Lockport Township High School teachers and guidance counselors. Now therefore be it resolved this 19th day of October 2020 by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Shims Alshabani, Evan Littman, Patrick Munkel, and Logan Namison are hereby recognized of their commended recognition status by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Congratulations. Students have their parents here this evening. We can have an opportunity to take a picture individually and also with their parents if they'd like. Give it up for the parents. Nice job. Congratulations. Yeah, congratulations. Okay, thank you. Patrick's mom and dad? Yeah, nice job.
Students, congratulations. Yes, students, I really commend you. I applaud you. I congratulate you for bringing this distinct honor to you, you know, to your families and to the school. We thank you and we congratulate you. All right. And now, we will proceed with our meeting. We can give you a few minutes if you would like to excuse yourselves, if you wanted to leave or stay.
Congratulations. Somebody's a lot lighter, right? I'm gonna do the same thing, the same spot. Three quarters of it will be there. I can guarantee that.
All right.
Do you want to introduce it or?
Uh, put the.
National Principal.
Okay. All right. All right. Each October, the National Association of Secondary School Principals and the Illinois Principals Association acknowledges the essential role that school principals play in the leadership of a school, the development of a climate and culture conducted to teaching, learning, and safety, and the benefit of a community. Having served in the role of a high school assistant principal for two years and principal for 14 years, I understand the challenges, demands, and duties of these roles, and I believe it essential for our Board of Education, staff members, and Porter Community to acknowledge the positive contributions of our principals and assistant principals. As such, I ask that the Board of Education to affirm this resolution. This resolution recognizing Dr. Kerry Green, Dr. John.
You guys have to, you guys have to come up too. I'll go up there with you. We didn't invite your parents.
Dr. John Greenham, Mrs. Trish Sermon, Dr. Jennifer Webb Ray, and Dr. or Mr. Matthew Bartley for their contributions to the students, staff members, parents, and guardians, district office administration, Board of Education, and Lockport Township communities. Whereas Dr. Kerry Green, Dr. John Greenham, Mrs. Trish Sermon, Dr. Jennifer Webb Ray, Mr. Matthew Bartley, serving as building administrators and assistant principals, having attended the appropriate experience, education, and licensure to do so. Whereas Dr. Kerry Green, Dr. John Greenham, Mrs. Trish Sermon, Dr. Jennifer Webb Ray, and Mr. Matthew Bartley have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their respective school buildings and our high school district through their tireless work ethic, commitment to others, grace under pressure, communication with stakeholders, vision for improvement, and empathy for the challenges faced by students and staff members, particularly in the time of a global pandemic. Whereas Dr. Kerry Green, Dr. John Greenham, Mrs. Trish Sermon, Dr. Jennifer Webb Ray, Mr. Matthew Bartley embody on a daily basis in understanding that their success and accomplishments are part of a broader team effort in living out the slogans, "Best self, best work, and together we succeed." Now therefore be it resolved on this 19th day of October 2020 by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, that Dr. Kerry Green, Dr. John Greenham, Mrs. Trish Sermon, Dr. Jennifer Webb Ray, and Mr. Matthew Bartley are hereby recognized for their service, commitment, and contribution as part of National Principals Month in October 2020. Congratulations. Wait a minute, wait a minute. I was in principal here. I was.
For two years and 14 years I was a high school principal. When we hired Dr. John Greenham, I very casually said, but I think I raised his eyebrows, I said, "All the principalship, if it doesn't thrill you, it'll kill you." And that is very true. And sometimes, much like, you know, Kerry Cooper Russo, who teaches. And, you know, a really great teacher or school counselor makes it look easy, but it's tremendously difficult. I think he's building principals and assistant principals doing the same exactly. This is National Principals Month, so just, you know, important to acknowledge that group days are never the same twice. And sometimes, I see them doing something august, and then I see them like moving chairs or something like that. So pretty amazing. So just a big round of applause, Mike Powell.
Of course.
Okay, moving on to, let's see, student reports. That would be student government?
Yeah, student government, I'll go first.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Victoria. I'm Anise Puckett.
I'm Zach Dalton.
I'm Kayla McGraw.
And we're missing one of our members, Francesca Friere. She was unable to come tonight, but we're happy that you invited us here. All right, so we just, we're gonna start by talking about kind of what we're doing this year. Our first kind of big thing we're trying to plan is a trivia night. We're trying to like get student involvement up in a way that we could do either virtually or in person. And it's, it's very flexible. They've, they've been done online, they've been done in person. But right now, we're trying to kind of just work out the details of that, kind of getting questions, categories together, trying to figure out the best way to facilitate that, to keep everybody safe. And right now, we're just trying to like talk to each other and talk to our members about like the way, the best way for that to work. And we are hoping that very soon, we could try and make, we could try and have our first one. And if it goes well, it could even become like a monthly thing that we could have different themes or different kind of central things going on. So we could just really get our student involvement up right now because it's been so hard this year.
Don't forget the prizes.
One of the things that we're trying to work on is possibly, we're still trying to work out the details, like a mini movie night that students could attend in obviously socially distanced. But like they could maybe rent out some of the, or not rent, like participate in the, some of the decorated theme rooms that we have for movies. Due to the loss of dances such as homecoming and twerk, we are trying to get as much student involvement as we can in spirit weeks. And we are working with the students involved in student government to try to see what themes we want to do. And going off of those themes, we're trying to collect it so that way we could do as many spirit weeks as possible and boarding, involving both Porter's and LTHS group days. So that way everyone gets a chance to participate and then just kind of get that activity back up.
Another event that we're trying to work on is doing some type of mask competition where students and teachers could nominate other faculty and students just to be able to get some type of like competition in like mask decorating. And that could be when we're in person. But those days where we are virtual, kids could decorate their backgrounds with different decorations and everybody could kind of nominate somebody. And that could go along with something for Halloween or Christmas season.
The big theme we're going with that is masquerade. Trying to make that a thing.
I mean, trying to reach out to other schools and seeing what they're doing also or?
I've, I've been working with the Vice Principal at Andrew because he's in charge of their activities. They're still trying to shuffle through what they're gonna do. But I have been talking with them, trying to figure out what they can do and then base it off of that here. But yeah, they're still trying to figure it out.
I've been talking to Bolingbrook, well, my friends at Bolingbrook, and then some people, some students at Eisenhower. Right now, they're still kind of, I don't even think they're hybrid yet. So they're not even really doing anything like that yet, perhaps in the future. But as of what I know right now, there's not too much going on right there.
So you guys are on top of head now?
Yeah. And then we're also working on our freshmen, Dr. Green, Mr. Sermon. Never can forget my girls. So I know that they, I know the freshman, which was very important to me, was Fresh Start. And even that first freshman day, when Dr. Green says, "What's your legacy?" And I'm like, "Oh, my goodness, my little cousin, he missed out on that this year. He's doing Apex." I know he's kind of antisocial and not even having that kind of, being with the students is very hard for him right now especially. And so I know he really wants to see more students. So I'm trying to figure out some type of virtual event, maybe just like a freshman themed virtual trivia night, or even like kind of having some type of day for them to come in, not all at one time, but just some type of meet and greet so they can see the different schools that feed in. Because I know I would miss it, and I know I miss Fresh Start so much that she wouldn't get to participate in it, to be volunteers. So that's very important. I want to know they have Lockport behind them, so yeah.
All right, so we're gonna switch out student government and then switch in. We got a couple of people up there already that are, are student equity. So I think Kaylin and Victoria, you can, you know, move up. And yeah, great seeing you, thanks so much. And just to introduce our leaders of our Student Equity Action Committee. The Board might remember that in the summer, in June, we had our Equity Action Committee present. We had four goal areas for this year. And one of the more important goal areas was to start a Student Equity Action Committee. We were lucky enough that I want to introduce my colleagues, Mrs. Andrea Cobbitt, our English Department Chair, Mr. Robert Beach, by the way, whose middle name is McBride. So we also enjoy that, it's true. It's a good thing. And who was one of our school counselors. And they were kind enough this year to just start up this group and worked extensively. I think their challenge to us, they've already presented to our entire staff. And I think their challenge to us is, in some ways, to make us uncomfortable. One story I might tell to frame up their presentation is a few years ago when I was principal, I was mentoring a young man who was really like a lot of these National Merit, commended, National Merit semifinalists, applying to the Harvards, the Howards of the country over the summer, doing a marketing internship at a leading advertising agency in the city. Amazing things. And probably the least important thing in his life was he was a fairly decent athlete as well. And I'll never forget, I saw him on the first day of his senior year, and the first question I asked him was, in front of a group of other students, I said, "Hey, how was your AAU basketball?" And there was a look on his face that let me immediately know something was wrong. I had said something wrong. And I was very lucky that I had the relationship with this young man that later I could ask, "I think I just did something wrong." And I recognized it, and he recognized it. And he challenged me, and I was lucky that for this young African-American man, all those things that I knew about him, the thing that jumped out of my head the first time I saw him was basketball. And whether I intended any offense or not was not important. What was important was how he felt, how I made him feel. And I think these folks are here to challenge maybe how we as adults approach situations and how we as a district approach our students. And so I'm gonna turn it over to them.
Did you want to do your intro?
Oh, yeah, okay. Hi, so we're happy that you have us tonight, and we are looking for you all to help us with a solution-oriented mindset to promote and support inclusivity and equity at our school. I'm Anise Puckett.
I'm Zach, as you know.
And I'm Alicia Thomas.
So I wanted to talk to you guys about the typical high school experience at Lockport and then the many layers underneath it. Just standard look at Lockport, you have homecoming, our team athletes, our spirit weeks, our academic clubs, our athletic clubs. A pretty good level, surface level description. We're all pretty, like a pretty good community together, and we all work together. But one of the terms that we were told to use, because you guys use it, is called the hidden curriculum. Under these many, under the surface level, there's conversations that were deemed like too political to discuss in classrooms. Conversations not quite had that maybe we wanted to dive into and unfortunately have led to certain topics being left out of our school's curriculum, maybe not celebrated enough or talked about enough in our school. We wanted to bring to light that hidden curriculum and make it just a part of our typical, everyday, day-to-day student experience. So that way, all people in our student body feel like they are being represented and appreciated for their background. And we got off of the LTHS website. The LTHS opposes racism in any form and affirms its commitment to honoring the dignity, humanity, and heritage of all of its students. That's exactly what we want to bring into the school and truthfully just highlight and emphasize about it in our curriculum, our day-to-day activities, our celebrations. And so this is our mission statement. The SEAC is a dedicated group of students working alongside LTHS faculty to increase cultural literacy and foster a deeper appreciation for diversity at our high school. We plan to host events with guest speakers, brainstorm fresh and engaging ways to celebrate Heritage Months and implement changes into both our school environment and the curriculum that reflects our dedication to achieving true equity. And these are only the few actions we plan to make. Our goal is to embrace open collaboration and communication between the faculty, parents, alumni, and students of LTHS. So what we have done is within our club, with the student body and faculty that have joined us, we have a marketing group that consists of artists and designers, a research and writers group, which helps us gather information on certain people that we'd like to highlight for our different Heritage Months, to like bring in different people into our curriculum that were not quite mentioned. And advertising and video crew, which we're working with our video club to like have more engaging interviews and conversations with students. Our parent staff outreach is actually headed by Anise as well, and our research is headed by Alicia. And that is why we plan on working with the Teacher Equity Action Committee to just try to bring a whole staff to student circle. And then communication is what I'm in charge of, which is the implementing cultural literacy and appreciation into our curriculum and celebrated events. So that way, we don't, we don't keep that hidden curriculum underneath the many levels, and then we could just kind of eliminate it and bring a full circle community to Lockport.
So another reason why the SEAC was starting, why we're so passionate, is because we are in such close contact with these students. For example, I am one of these students, and why I'm so passionate, I want to share with you all, during my sophomore year at LTHS, I experienced some explicit bias. And I was abused physically by some students. Things were thrown at me, not only food, but a water bottle and such was thrown at me during my time as a sophomore at lunch, which is why I'm so passionate about this issue because not only does that affect me, but that affects our whole students. Because the way I look at other students, my counterparts, I'm like, "I don't want to be here." I know other students as well have some. I know she did that. Oh, we can't read it, dang it. Mr. D, could you possibly read that for me?
Sure.
I can't see it. Oh, wait, I can read it. I didn't realize it was on here. I had, so like this is an example from a student who faced an implicit bias, bias. But I had a past history teacher that would always look at the minorities she was talking about. Anytime she talked about the LGBTQ community, she'd look directly at me. Anytime she looked at slavery, she looked at my friend. And this is a challenge because no student should have to deal with that. And I don't think other students should have to see that either, which also comes into the environment of our school. And the, not only the lack of representation that, that factors into it, but the lack of support. And that doesn't mean having a conversation, not like, "Oh, my goodness, like, how was your day?" You know, but having that type of dialogue, getting to reach further to the student, like as Dr. McBride said, more than the basketball player, more than the athlete, more than what you see, I'm more than my hair. And most students, most students are more than what their stereotypes are. And that whole experience could lead to not wanting to come back to Lockport. A lot of students, not, I'm saying specifically students of color because of what they experienced at Lockport. I know Dr. McBride, it's really on me to become a teacher, but my negative experience. I know Dr. McBride, it's really on me to become a teacher, but my negative experiences at Lockport show me that maybe I don't want to come back into education because of the lack of support that I was given when something bad happened to me on multiple events. It was more than one time for me personally. However, from Dr. McBride, Ms. Cristofaro, Ms. Cobbitt, Mr. Beach, has shown me that I do have support and I do have some type of representation where maybe I do want to come back, maybe I do want to be an educator, which is very important, I believe, at LTHS.
Yes, because just going off of what Anise said, I feel like something that we're trying to combat as a Student Equity Action Committee is, yes, there are problems, but how can we be, have that solution-oriented mindset, as Anise said, because yes, acknowledging the problem is the first step, but crafting a solution is where the real action happens. As you can see, we're titled the Student Equity Action Committee, so that's a point we really want to drive home. But earlier Zach said the mission statement of the Student Equity Action Committee. I am very proud to say that we have taken action and made progress since we first formed in the summer. Our Google Classroom includes eighty-seven members, including students, teachers, and administration. Some regular attendees are also in this room outside of our students. You know who you are. The steering committee members, so our students as well as our other student steering committee members are all part of another equity initiative called Diversify Our Narrative. And for those of you who aren't familiar with that, this organization started over this summer. It's a nationwide movement to fight for racial justice by including more anti-racist and diverse texts in high school curriculums. The petition at bit.ly/petitions has collected a hundred and seventy-four signatures from staff and students in the Lockport community, and we have also started an Instagram account dedicated to teaching the Lockport community about inclusivity with over two hundred followers. We encourage all of you to sign and lend your support. SEAC has three meeting types, so I want you guys to get a glimpse, if you haven't been to one of our meetings, what we do. So we have either task-based meetings, conversation-based meetings, or guest speaker visits. In our task-based meetings, Zach touched on our various groups within SEAC. Over this past month, September was Hispanic Heritage Month, our artists and designers made Hispanic Heritage Month-themed Google Classroom headers, as you can see, for at least seventy-five percent. Our researchers and writers created playlists for both Hispanic Heritage Month and mental health awareness, because I don't know about you all, but I'm a firm believer that music is something that transcends all of our differences, so I feel like that's a way that we can connect with students, just like listen to one song, try something new. Our staff outreach group, headed by Anise, has created Google slides for staff to send out on remind celebrating accomplished individuals of Hispanic heritage for each day of the month. And our communication group used a Google form to compile student stories, which were anonymous entries where students could discuss their personal experiences with discrimination. And having read through that slideshow was heartbreaking, and if you guys have a chance to look over that, or if we could somehow send that out, it's really touching to see these personal stories, and I think people felt more comfortable sharing because it was anonymous, because Anise had the courage to say a few things, but you would be surprised to learn how much more people have to say as well. In our conversation-based meetings, aside from taking action, we also dedicate some of our meetings to talking about and sharing opinions on current events or stigmatized topics such as mental health. We just finished Suicide Prevention Month, and we're entering Bully Prevention Month, so we wanted to address those topics as well, because being perceived as different also relates to those topics. And with our guest speaker visits, in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, we listened to two guest speakers from the Hispanic Latino Club at Argonne National Laboratory in La Motta, Dr. Kaminski and Mr. Quintanar. And to learn about the importance of inclusivity in media, as well as the importance of being your own ambassador, we interviewed the acclaimed Indian-American actress, journalist, and writer, Shruti Mahter. So in my time as a student at Lockport, I can relate to both Zach's perspective as a typical student and Anise's atypical student perspective. In my freshman year, I saw Lockport as a very safe, welcoming, and inclusive school. In the following years, personal experience and conversations with friends taught me that Lockport still has quite a bit more progress to make. The way I see it, at the surface level, everything at Lockport is okay. It's not perfect, but it definitely doesn't seem terrible either. But as you peel back the layers, start to have those difficult conversations, as students like Anise share what they have personally experienced on school grounds, you will realize that despite the progress we have made, we still have a long way to go. As a senior, I have come to associate Lockport with a three-word statement, "Together we succeed." Whether it be a document from the school or a passionate Sunday announcement from Principal Grader, the mantra is ingrained in my brain. But Lockport Township High School wants to truly impress this statement on its community, we have to come together. We have to encourage a sense of unity at our school. We have to appreciate all the different backgrounds and cultures that make up our school community. We have to foster an environment where everyone feels seen and heard. We should create a place where everyone can proudly embrace how unique they are. Rather than feel discouraged that they do not fit into the societal constructs of what beautiful, successful, or normal is.
In terms of our future plans and solutions and how we want to work with you all, when we face challenges at Lockport, our response should not be, "That's just how it is, we need to question why and find solutions." What students see in a school matters. If students do not see themselves and their heritage represented in leadership roles, whether that be the teachers or the administration, it can be very detrimental to them.
And representation reminds students of their unlimited potential, while the lack of it may convince them that they will always have to settle for second best. Our curriculum must be inclusive, and we must not tolerate discriminatory language and behavior in the hallways, and unfortunately, Google meets alike. And we're asking, are you ready to commit to creating a positive experience for all students at Lockport? And we do recognize that change can be difficult, and we understand that a consensus might not want to change. But as a Student Equity Action Committee, we offer our support for these much-needed changes.
We want to foster a school community that teaches students to not merely tolerate others, but openly accept others for who they are. Teaching inclusivity, as Anise said, will continue to benefit students and their respective communities long after their time at Lockport. Ultimately, we want to work together with you all to create an environment where every student feels supported and encouraged to succeed. Thank you.
And we thank you for your time, and we appreciate that you allowed to, that you allowed us to speak with you all tonight, and we hope we get an invite back.
Thank you for all your hard work, for everything, that even the presentation, coming here on a school night, you know, coming here, giving us your insights and everything, and yes, I agree with Alicia, you know, with the music and stuff. As I remember, I had a great uncle, you know, here for many years, and he always told me, you know, because I was like the, I want to say, I was like probably the first one outside of the, outside of the Italian family to marry, okay? But he always said, you know, when he first welcomed me into the family, he said, "You know what? Music has no borders." So that was something that really stuck with me, and I empathize to you with Anise, because, I mean, I went here to Lockport and it was very, you know, it was challenging sometimes, I can see it, you know, coming from you, because I was Hispanic too, but, but yes. But I know that we've come a long way, and we will succeed, like, together we will succeed. All right, thank you so much for your time and effort and everything, and yes, we will definitely welcome you back, definitely. But if you can do us a favor, I don't know if they can send us those slides to the school board, if they could do that, or not?
I think that the Able Cathy Maxwell attached them to your agenda.
Is it on there? It's keep scrolling down?
If you scroll down just a little bit, it is attached.
I know I saw some of the slides.
Yeah, it's attached as a PDF when we were having trouble with the, with the board, so. It is there, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks you guys, have a great night.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Mr. Beach, Ms. Cobbitt, thank you.
All right, Ms. Karen Cooper, yes.
Am I right, I follow these gaps?
I don't know. Yeah, it strikes me though that we've all been evolving and dealing with change after change. I mean, our, my report is basically just handling change, that's all it is. And so I think one of the nice things that came from change that I wanted to share was the parent-teacher conferences. I mean, as we meet together and we talk through, wow, this is going to be the next thing that we have to deal with, and being able to talk together on that, I think it went well, I don't know how else, I don't know, I'm sure the feedback was well. The parents I spoke to, well-received, our staff, very well-received, so I'm hoping it's the type of format that we would consider in the future. I think it went fantastic, so, yeah. I appreciate though the opportunity to find a flexible way that everybody could agree with, so it went fantastic. I'm just continuing to extend thanks to administration and the board for their flexibility in working with staff members that have childcare concerns and health concerns, and I know Mr. Kindari has been tirelessly working on this, so yes, thank you again. And just other things that have evolved from this, and I know that last meeting we talked about evaluations, and one of the things that came up in a meeting I was in today was, wow, do we, you know, it was a staff member trying to figure out how the evaluation system was going to go, and a newer staff member, and then we kind of did a work-through and talked about it and said, "Wow." We don't even know how, we've got to coach people for what it's going to look like. So we had this really fantastic creative conversation that kind of evolved into Pat Dean and Kate Fahey, who now are going to do some coffee EDUs on the different domains for evaluation, and, you know, what we can do with the virtual world and how to make that work. So I'm appreciating the collaboration that has been occurring, and it has, it's evolved into some nice work. The last thing I just want to talk about is just the hybrid plan, and just a quick conversation on that piece. And so I just want to mention that, I mean, I know we are enjoying working with kids, I know it's a positive experience. We were, it came soon that we were going to stay in hybrid, so a little bit surprised, but again, you know, glad to see kids, glad to work through it. It just winds up being a huge shift in teaching and planning, and that's been a tough part for us. I know that we value having kids in person in front of us, and I truly appreciate that we have looked at schedules that involve the ability to teach the kids in front of us and not have to focus on anything else. Otherwise, I don't know why we would have the kids in front of us, I mean, the ability to focus on those kids, and then have some time and some things that we can do with the other kids. It's a lot of work, I'm sure you realize that, I think that we've got very stressed-out staff, but I think everybody, every staff everywhere is going through this and trying to figure it out. Panic, we're trying to tweak curriculum, and I'm talking to parents saying, "I promise, I'm working my hardest to get your kid what they need so that I can get them to where they need to go, I'm trying, I'm trying my hardest." Just that, planning for those kids that aren't with you, I mean, we're still doing it, so that's extra work on top of what you're doing during the day. And there's a lot of communication, we're getting a lot more emails again compared to what you would get in regular format. And then it's that finding that time to meet with kids, which in the schedule we're in right now has been phenomenal. The chance to just work with kids has been great. So the other piece is addressing student absences, I mean, we're starting to see a lot more of that with the quarantining, and so that also winds up being like a big burden, "How do you handle this? What can I do with this?" So there's just a lot of stressors out there that I just want to share with you, just from teacher perspective, I'm sure you're aware of it. But there's no schedule that can minimize those stressors, I think that's the reality for everybody on this. And so, you know, just the support and understanding that what people are going through is something that I think we're hoping for. And then the second thing that I think came as a little bit of a surprise was just that shift to lunches. I mean, it's just a big fear, I don't know any other way to put it. Having everybody in the building in masks and teaching, that, that's something I think that people have been, you know, that's been a comfort level, that's been okay. Thrilled to have kids in front of us, just knowing that really the mask is being pronounced as the big, "This is what works." And knowing that you're going to be like, as I was, I was uncomfortable, sorry, in this room earlier, I stepped out. It's just where I am with this, you know, and it's just how it is, it's how you train, it's how you think about it. And so thinking of being in this room without masks, and kids unmasking and eating, I mean, this is what everybody's envisioning, and they're struggling. So I just, I need to share that, and I know that people, I get a couple emails almost every day with a new article, you know, or "Dr. Fauci said this," or whatever it is, you know, but I get stuff every day from people because they're worried. We did put out a survey, just so you know, because I thought, "Well, how worried are they?", because I would like to know. And when we got back results, just so you know, it was eighty-eight point four percent of the people that did answer the survey, which was about a hundred and thirty people, felt that students should not be eating lunch in the building, even if we had them appropriately spaced out, all right? So I need to share that. Now, part of that is just fear that just exists as we try to work through things, and so I did share that with the steering committee. And when I did, we talked about the details and spacing and ventilation, and so then we talked about how to help people maybe feel a little bit better. So we did come up with some ideas, Dr. McBride shared with staff the ventilation reports and exactly what's been done in that area. And then the other thing that we talked about, and it's been happening, is that the administrators have been coming down to all of the supervisions and just talking through the space. Let people look at their space, you know, "Can I make my space work? How can I feel better about my space?", and then coming up with the plan, "Okay, these kids will unmask at this time." So I guess the best thing I can say is, I appreciate that there has been a plan that's offered, that things have been addressed. We're still afraid, we're still trying to trust the situation, so I'm hopeful that everybody realizes that, that this is not a place that everybody else is having to deal with. So it's something that I need to share on behalf of the people that I represent. We appreciate the steps and the cautions that have been put in place to keep students and staff safe. This administration has worked hard, I know that, to accommodate so many situations, just to make in-person learning work, all right? And it is valued. We understand that at some point our region could reach dangerous levels, and the state could call us back to remote learning, and nobody really wants that, all right? Only if it has to be. We're counting on the administration to monitor the school's levels and make important decisions, and if necessary, you know, maybe it will be just not having lunch, and that's something that we need to consider, so. I thank you for listening to me, I appreciate it always, thank you. Thank you, thank you, for sharing your concerns. What's the IHC Governing Board Report, that's for Luann?
Yes? Hello?
Hello, you're up next, Luann.
Uh, you have the A and B report?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have the resolutions in front of me, but if the board members have, what do you have or have not? What I would like for you to do, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I would like for the board members to... I'm sorry, because I'm, I gotta get off of this. Okay, I'm back. I was listening to the YouTube, the meeting on YouTube, and there's a delay, so that was throwing me off. Okay. It's to vote how you want to, for these resolutions, one through eight. And what you could do is email me, and you can say like, the first one is loan program. You could say yes or no. Now, one through eight, and then the, which is loan program, good storage, school report card, pre-K teacher licenseurs, teacher storage, e-learning on Election Day, local control pandemic, local control, I don't know why seven and eight is duplicate, but anyway. There are re-information of existing programs, number nine is charter school renewal of charters. Number ten is charter school that risks students. Number eleven, state authorized charter school funding. And then a new belief statement is number twelve is equity. So send me yes or no, and then I'll tally them up. And then when I go to the delegate assembly, I will vote accordingly. Question?
Yes, Luann, when did you want these, or when did you want us to email this to you?
By the end of next week.
Okay.
Because I think the delegate assembly is first part of November. They have two sessions, they have an education session, and then they have the actual vote, voting.
Okay.
Can we give these to Kathy and Cathy email or call?
Yeah, I was going to suggest, Luann, all of the board members that are here have an actual ballot right now. And if, if you feel, there's some extras too, if you feel that you can finish your ballot tonight, with your permission, Luann, if I could just make a recommendation, on proposals... proposals one, two, three, and four. Uh, one, two, and three, the Illinois Association of School Boards is not recommending. The reason why, gun storage at home, important, a concept, obviously, you know, weapons discharged from the home, harming children, not good, but the Illinois Association of School Boards is not supporting it because it's a, it's a home issue, not a school issue. Um, oh, and I'm sorry, I jumped over loan program. I A S B is not supporting that because it, it indicates a loan program that the state would enter into, but without a funding source. So dollars will be scarce in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and without indicating a, a funding source, did not feel that they could support that. School report card, um, this is a push to have the regular metrics on our school report card, and the state school board has already said in this unusual year that they were not doing that, and I would support that as well, and the state, I A S B supports that. For us, pre-K licensure really does not apply as a high school district. I would, for proposal number five, encourage you to endorse that. It speaks to the teacher shortage and endorses the idea of, of a quicker route to provisional certificates, which is something that is much needed in the state. If you have enough education to get a provisional, that you can move along a little quicker to do that, that's mainly in our CTE areas. Uh, e-learning on a, on election day, I would also encourage you, like I A S B, this year, we have to give a complete holiday, we cannot do e-learning on the election day, and so I would encourage the board to endorse that if that is a proposal. Seven and eight are both about local control during the pandemic, and I would leave it up to board members. I would endorse seven, as I A S B does. Seven is regional control, so regional metrics rather than statewide metrics determining schools. Eight proposes of school district control. And I understand why the I A S B is, is not supporting that, because there could be a patchwork of different districts doing different things, which could make it difficult. Nine, ten, and eleven simply propose a reaffirmation of already approved resolutions. And then twelve is just asking, actually, my previous district, Indian Prairie District Two Oh Four, and I A S B has endorsed it, that all school boards in the state of Illinois make a commitment to equity and diversity and dignity along those lines, so. If you, if you feel like you can vote tonight and do the, do the sheet, Kathy can certainly collect those. And Luanne, is it okay if board members feel like they can't vote tonight, if they email it to Kathy and she could put that together for you?
Uh, she can't, uh, if she gets them, she can scan them and email them to me.
Okay, great, great. I don't know if there's any questions. Uh, this year...
I didn't know, I didn't know if they had read the resolutions, because I, I didn't, I haven't gotten the book, so I have not read them myself, that's why I suggest, they take time and go through them.
We do, we have it here also, we have the booklet.
Mine's in the mail.
Okay.
But, so that's the one thing, so if you feel like you can vote on it, vote on it tonight and give it to Kathy.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing is that, um, in lieu of a triple I this year, uh, I A S B is doing, um, virtual, um, conference. So if you haven't signed up with Kathy, is it too late, Kathy?
No, it's not too late.
Let Kathy know and sign up. I think it would be interesting, uh, to go to the, uh, virtual conference, um, you know, just see how they handle it, and to, then this way you can go to sessions as your schedule permits, so. I think that the, um, Three Rivers, uh, combined conference should be coming up, I don't have the date off the top of my head. I thought it was this month, but, uh, so you may see something, uh, in your email about that. We're, uh, going to combine the Three Rivers with, uh, so, uh, Soft Cook, uh, so for a, a joint, um, local conference. It's going to be virtual. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Okay. Yeah, I think it is, it's in our packet also regarding the, to sign up for that conference for virtual, I think Kathy did say, so yes. Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, I apologize, I was looking at it on YouTube, trying to see the Equity Group, and then it was a delay, so I had it on my phone and the YouTube, so that's why I wasn't sure where we were, so.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. All right, okay, next we have the foundation board report.
Well, it's been a quiet time because with the pandemic it limits our activities, but there has been a significant development as presented by the foundation board to the high school board last month about a proposal with a new executive director, which was endorsed by the board here. Subsequent to that, there has been a development of a job description, and I believe last week it was posted?
Yes, it's live.
Is that right? Last week, the executive director position was posted. It's going to really bring it, the foundation into really a new level, I, I think. It's just having a full-time dedicated executive director will allow for, you know, the, the necessary hours it's going to take to have an alumni network and just things, there's a lot of community outreach, and there's a lot of positives here, and we'll go, be going down that process, because right now our, the pandemic is limiting what activities, which we cannot really have any right now, and in fact, a lot of people in this room come with our lunch with Santa, and we will not be able to do that this year, so. Mike Petty is very disappointed about that, so. But, so really, I don't, I, it's a short, you know, report, but that's a bit, very important change that we're looking forward to implementing, hopefully soon.
All right, well, thank you. All right, next we have any legislative report?
We do, as you might be surprised, most of the legislators are focused on the date of November third, so it seems like everything is related, but it's not much legislation enacted. The Senate Education Committee is continuing to meet weekly. What it's focusing on is the COVID nineteen pandemic, and particularly future funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, and how that's going to impact the budget. Equitable funding, there's quite a bit of discussion, the state needs three hundred and fifty million dollars to continue its commitment to evidence-based, uh, funding, so ISBE is planning on reviewing evidence-based funding, and it has asked this year for report, report, thank you, Mrs. Croy, filled out our site-based expenditure reports that help sort of justify evidence-based funding, give the state an idea of what, what it would have to do to keep that funding formula going. There continues to be a hot discussion in Springfield about social studies. The Legislative Black Caucus has asked for a overhaul of the Illinois priority standards in social studies, to take a look at issues of race and equity, as we, you know, heard earlier. There's no legislation that's introduced, and it's only been discussed in committees and hearings right now. And finally, two very important, one was in your update last week, important emergency rule updates. One is that as Mrs. Cooper mentioned, as teachers might have to be quarantined, who covers their class if they are kind of beamed remotely into their classroom? Previously, state law was that it had to be a licensed professional, now it can be an unlicensed staff member, which opens up coverage possibilities for us. The second, um, change was that to come back to school, if a student has to receive a COVID test, student has to receive what's called a PCR test, very different than the antigen test. That is the nasal swab for the most part that you hear so much about, and takes longer, and I had to make a drive this afternoon, I went by a COVID site, cars out onto the road, backed up to get the PCR test, usually takes three to four days to get the result, so. So to get back into school, if you've had a COVID positive or COVID exposure, that's the test you have to get, so. That's what is going on in Springfield.
Thank you. All right, communications.
Yes, and, uh, Secretary Shaw's, uh, absence.
No, but I thought, I thought Luanne had a question.
Yes.
I thought I heard her say she asked a question, but I don't think so. All right, I'm sorry.
Are you ready now?
Okay.
Yes, well, there's just one communication, it's from the Joliet Area Community Hospice, a donation was made in the memory of Nancy Hannigan, she is the mother of Kristen Williams, who is an English teacher here at the school, so. It was a very nice thank you letter for the donation from the Joliet Area Community Hospice.
Thank you. All right. All right, then the Freedom of Information request, there was only one there. Okay, moving on, let's see, public comments. All right, a designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the agenda item they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up, and there is none. Okay, next we have the approval items. I just need a motion for the approval of the regular meeting minutes. We'll do both, um, let's see, the approval of the regular meeting minutes and the approval of the closed session meeting minutes of September twenty-first, twenty twenty. I can make that motion?
So...
All right, and I can second that?
I'll second it.
I already did, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
You can throw it in.
Okay, roll call.
Eyes?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
I'm staying.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right, next we have the approval of the board member expenses for October twenty twenty. Just need a motion for that. I can make that motion, you just need a second.
Second.
All right, it's been motion by, by Ms. Lopez Caniva, and second by Dr. Shaw, to approve the board member expenses for October twenty twenty. Roll call.
Kathy, I voted wrong.
For, oh, okay, question.
Okay.
All right. Okay.
Roll call. For expenses?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Eyes?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right, next we have, next we have the approval of the treasures report of September twenty twenty. Just need a motion for that?
So, I'll second it.
All right, it's been motion by Mr. Eyes and second by Mr. Lewandowski. Any questions?
Is it a lot, the new format, which I kind of like, is that a lot more work for you?
Uh, it's not a lot more work, but it is more work, because we have to go back and pull things from the prior year.
Okay.
But, and it...
It's appreciated, anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's a little more work, it's not a lot more work.
All right.
All right, but we thank you for it. Sure, thank you.
Oh, it's a good, it's, it's an analysis for me to look at, yes.
It's very helpful.
Okay, I like. Okay, all right, so just need, um, it's been motion and second, so I just need the roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Eyes?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Okay, next we have our superintendent update.
Thanks so much. Uh, just a couple of things, I want to highlight some aspects as Mrs. Cooper introduced of a return in-person hybrid learning, and, and then also, you know, talk a little bit about some of the surveying that we did as well. But before I do that, just two ancillary items, not ancillary in, in importance, but just ancillary to the hybrid plan. First, I want to acknowledge for the Board of Education the grace, leadership, and humility of Dr. Carrie Green, Trish Sermon, P E teacher Dave Jagulinski, P E teacher Rory O'Connell, English teacher Derek Sanderson, Dean Jason Osbalt, and Central Media Specialist Kevin Conway, in responding to the loss, and really our entire community, from our union, to our administration, to our teachers, to our board president, the loss of Mr. Joe Lewandowski and celebrating his life. The, the loss of a student and the loss of an active faculty member in my thirty-two years can be one of the most consequential, substantial events for a staff. It's, it's, it's hard to underestimate it, and I really do believe schools are different places, schools oftentimes describe themselves as families, and we certainly miss Mr. Lewandowski, but I, I think the grace and humility of those people really lifted all of us up at a real time of war. I also would like to commend the partnership of our guidance department, our social workers, psychologists, director of public relations, Dean Wheeler, web manager and videographer Eric Slager, and the non-for-profit Kids Matter for building a webpage and a website that supports social and emotional learning. All the research is right now, the kids are suffering at home. I was in a superintendent consortium that described in Lake, DuPage, and Will County, every inpatient facility in those counties is full that services youth in terms of SCL issues, and so it's worth a visit to, to see that site, it's really amazing. I want to dive into, as the board is aware, and, and I really commend Mrs. Cooper and her partnership. I think she is diplomatic in the challenge of what we've asked teachers to do. It is unique, it's singular, I hope it's once in a lifetime, very challenging for our teachers in the environment they're in right now when there's so much uncertainty. It is difficult teaching and trying to lay out a sequence when you don't really know what is ahead. But then also worrying about health, as, as I think she indicated, you know, just feeling nervous in her situation in this room. You know, rare is it that a teacher goes to work and feels just health nervous. But I would say, that anxiety, we wouldn't wish it as leaders on anyone, we would never want to cause anxiety, but I would say that anxiety sharpened our thinking and made us more attentive to what we need to do to move forward. As the Board of Education is where we started two-phase in-person return, last Thursday up until this Friday, we will use our shortened schedule, which was a safety protocol we used at the beginning of the year, exactly because of what Mrs. Cooper shared, many of us hold, the idea of taking masks off large groups of students, is that safe or not? We have traveled, we traveled to Lincoln Way School District to see their work, they're in their fourth week, I believe, fourth or third week of running a full lunch schedule, did some surveying of other schools that are running a full day in, in the area, borrowed some protocols, and in some ways our protocols are stricter. One of the important things, I do appreciate the partnership of Mrs. Cooper, and our building principals and assistant principals to walk through the expectation that when there is lunch, that it does have to be sort of as uniform as what we're doing right now with our masks and our six-foot separation. Not a situation where we're asking students all just to take off their masks for fifty minutes, eat, socialize, it's eating in groups, putting those masks right back on. We know that we can't have a full school day without students getting something to eat during the day, so lunch is really an effort to extend those minutes of contact that, that students have. We've taken a cautious, measured approach in consultation with our union, and a high attention to safety. So the first phase began last week, and the next phase will, will begin on Monday. We have one great advantage, thank you, Mr. Thompson and Mrs. Croy, in that we've entered into the federal school lunch program, which right now, under the auspices of the federal government and COVID relief, every single student is eligible for a free lunch. That's significant because no money will change hands. Anyone who wants to use our food services can grab and go without a lot of standing around, waiting around, congregating to pay. They can take and go, so that's an important part of our plan. I, I wanted to, um, share a technology, and if, if board members can't see it on, on the, on the screen in front of us, because, thank you, Mr. Dostroff, he's been working really hard, there are also the slides or a PDF if you'd rather to see them in front of you. But in order to really try to come to some understanding and decision, we use the technology called Thought Exchange, and what Thought Exchange does is something probably that's very needed in these days. We sent a survey out to parents, and we sent a survey out to, um, our, our staff, it only asks one question. After you respond to the one question, what it does then is ask you to interact with thirty questions, thirty responses of other people, generally... 30 responses of other people, generally different than your own. So I'm all for these days, people interacting with opinions different than, than theirs. In order to kind of crowdsource that data to come to an understanding with those differing opinions, where might there be a consensus? So the question we ask both our parents and we ask our teachers is reflect on possible changes to our calendar, schedule of learning, and lunch service, one of the most important things for our Board of Education and district leadership to consider. If you could just roll up, Matt. Um, staff member participation, uh, first, uh, we had 389 participants, that's almost 80% of our staff. Four hun, they shared 490 thoughts, it allows you to share thoughts multiple times. And then interactions, what that means is someone read somebody else's thought. So that happened 23,478 times. Um, the six pending, if there's any kind of language, it's concerning language. Um, those are all comments about student mental health or comments about an individual's personal safety. It reads that language, flags it, um, just for special attention. Um, if we kind of scroll up, this is one way that we can look at, um, uh, an individual response. Of those 389 individual responses, you can see some of the words that came up of greatest concern. Schedule in terms of consistency, lunch, what Mrs. Cooper shared, that anxiety, time, the most precious thing that our teachers have with students, and then concerns about how our hybrid would pay out, play out. Matt, can you, uh, scroll up just one more? But then when you collectively bring in the responses, this is after all the interactions between staff, changes a little bit, consistency emerged as the most important word. Concern about symptoms, change, and then a real concern with parents be doing their level best to send healthy students to us and make healthy choices, um, outside of school. Keep rolling up, we'll, uh, take a look at the parent individual response. Same survey, uh, with parents. Parents, um, learning was important to parents, kids, a focus on kids, days meaning kind of a full day, and then getting back to school. And some concerns about social issues and remote. But then when parents kind of crowdsourced this and, um, began to, uh, interact with each other, um, they became more concerned with mental health, in-class, continuation of education, but much like our teachers, a desire for consistency as, as important. Um, if you roll up, uh, Matt, one interesting thing, um, another way to look at this data is side A and side B, and what the, the Thought Exchange does is it takes the two, you're seeing the two most extreme views from our staff. Side A, we have to consider health above anything. Um, that was the top response, top starred response, 4.9 out of 5 with our staff. Side B, more than anything else, we need to get students back in school using IDPH guidelines. So we have side A and side B, you can see by the starring that, um, either side didn't starve each other very much. But right in the middle, difficult to see up on that board, was again the issue of consistency. Um, a very important issue. Matt, if you scroll up, and now you see the same screen for parents, differences. Side A, the more dominant side was getting students back in the building. Side B, a concern, maybe the district is moving too fast, so that's shared. I think it's shared with a number of people. But right in the middle were new ways for students to interact and consistency as well. Could we be creative? Keep scrolling, Matt. Um, actually, I think that's the, the last slide.
Last one.
Yeah, sorry. I kind of lost it down there, uh, on the bottom. Um, what this ultimately did for us is it allowed us to see that there was a consensus around trying to get to a consistent platform that was reliable and was dependable. Um, we have had great success so far, um, in great measure also to Carly Maroni, Tony Candari, really everybody in this room contributing to symptom tracking and contact tracing. Um, that really sort of guided, as well as seeing what's happening in, around us in terms of coming back to, to in-person, and the feeling that that anchor is much needed by students. But there is a note of caution that we do have to sound today, and as Mrs. Cooper, um, mentioned, that we'll be looking at very carefully, is that these cases are on the rise. Um, please don't shoot the messenger, uh, anyone out there. But what we're being told by public health officials, I was in three briefings, and I don't like to blame or shame the community, but we're being told that COVID fatigue has set, set in, and when the county is doing contact tracing, and our own contact tracing shows it, it's primarily in social choices that are made outside of school. Um, corn mazes, I don't mean to hurt anyone's business, large social gatherings, birthday parties, sleepovers, things like that, that are kind of going back and finding the contact tracing. Strangely enough, I think the way that things have played out is that it isn't the school that's the super spreader. It's the super spreader is in the community, and the fear is the super spreader coming, you know, onto the school, on the school grounds. Uh, so we're doing everything we can to maintain in-person learning with everything that we've learned since June 1st. In order to be safe, to keep people safe, but obviously if we're not safe, uh, we use a little thing around here that I call the Candari Index. If we begin to see that, um, we have too many teachers out because of symptom, um, uh, quarantine, and we can't staff our buildings, or if we begin to have a real spread of disease, then we'll have to make choices accordingly, so just take board member questions.
All right. Veronica or Delancey, do you have any questions for Dr. McBride?
Oh, I do. Uh, so when students return back to school, I was curious about the, um, contact tracing plan and the responsibility behind that, who that falls on?
Yeah, great, and, and for board members, there was a board question, and you should also, if you didn't get a chance to your email, we put Kathy and I put in your, Kathy really, put in your envelope just the, the response I sent out. So when a student return, and, and Veronica, Dr. Shaw, you were talking about when the student comes back off the quarantine.
No, I'm talking, so, um, for example, a student calls in, I have, or a parent calls a student in, I have a running, my child has a run nose and a cough. Um, obviously they're getting quarantined for 14 days pending COVID results, but, um, I'm looking more so like who's handling that situation?
Great, got it. So the way that that's been working, and so far to the best of our knowledge successfully, I'm, I'm really impressed with our parents. Um, that call goes to our attendance office, our, our parents have been leaving symptoms on attendance. If that gets routed, we'll just go with, you know, sinus C or headache or whatever the COVID symptom is. It then goes over to our certified school nurse, um, or a registered nurse at Central. Once they realize that, they're the person on the front line that is responsible for interacting with the, the, the family. They go through a process or our, um, uh, our, uh, Health Secretary, uh, Tracy Rumcheck, calling home, asking a few more questions, and then sharing with the family, you're on a 14-day quarantine until you, uh, are symptom-free or you have a negative PCR test. They begin a database, tracking that student, um, but also following up to see if that family has had a COVID test, because obviously if that COVID test shifts to a positive COVID, then Mr. Candari becomes, uh, involved as well. And the reason why Mr. Candari becomes involved as well is because Carly Maroni primarily does the contact tracing from the student point of view. Who has that student come in contact with, and has there been close contact? Mr. Candari interacts with any adults who might have been involved with that student, and was there a close contact? The close contact matters the most because this is like masks. This has become a factor, uh, you know, closer than six feet with or without a mask on for more than 15 minutes. Um, close contact has become as important as wearing a mask. If there is close contact, then students and staff members would have to go on quarantine. If there's no close contact, then it's monitoring symptoms. So that's kind of without a flow chart, Dr. Shaw, I hope I answered the question.
You did, thank you very much.
And just one thing to add, um, you know, not to, not to go to HIPAA jail. Last Tuesday, uh, IDPH authorized schools to share with adult staff members students who might test COVID positive. Um, we had a different reading of HIPAA all along, we worked with, with our union. We felt that if a teacher had a COVID positive student in their classroom, it was important to inform that teacher as a relevant personnel, which is stated right in, in the HIPAA law. So we've been doing that all along, it's a central chain, because also that teacher can give us good feedback in her or his classroom or team, was there a close contact, which is the key thing. Almost our whole plan tries to eliminate any kind of close contact. And the one area that we're working on the most, and we're getting a lot of cooperation, is close contact between the adults who work here. That's the thing that, that we're working on the most these days.
All right, all right, thank you.
Can you, uh, this is Luanne, can you send us some numbers of how many potential cases that we have so far?
Yeah, I did today, Luanne, and there was a board member question about that for the agenda.
Statistics there, okay.
Yep.
I'll go look.
And, you know, as a matter of public record, it's really, it's right now, we have 123 students who are on quarantine because of symptoms that we're tracking. We have 10 staff members who are on quarantine because of symptoms or they had an exposure at home to a child or a spouse who tested positive, uh, for COVID. We have six students who have tested positive. Uh, three, no relationship to school whatsoever. Three were on campus, and we did have to do the contact tracing with them. Luckily, none of them had close contact with any staff member or coach or other student. And then we have one staff member who has a positive COVID test right now, and that was acquired, uh, through a contact tracing off-campus. So that's all in that email.
So we are doing our own contact tracing, uh, but do we notify the, uh, IDPH and then they do contact, contract?
They, they, they do not, Luanne, they, uh, several weeks ago, as you can imagine, is Dr. Alech Patel from the Will County Public Health. If they were doing contact tracing on, we're one of many businesses, if you thought about it that way, they couldn't survive in, in Will County. So we are doing our own contact tracing, um, and symptom tracking. That was what, you might recall, on August 12th, kind of put us into full remote because we just, that was a surprise, we didn't have those systems set up. We do now, um, in, in excellent, in excellent order. Um, there are certain thresholds where we do have to contact, um, the, uh, Will County Department of Public Health. If, if we got to a place where we thought there was a breakout, two people in the same space who both tested positive for COVID, for example, we would have to involve a Will County Public Health.
So we do all the upfront research and tracking, and then we feed that information to the Health Department?
We are not required to turn it over to the Health Department, it's required to go to the superintendent and to me, to make determinations about keeping school open or closed. I'll give you the exact analogy. Um, recently, um, uh, the director, the executive director of Will County Public Health, more and more of the state, and, and take this for what it is, again, don't shoot the messenger, is looking at COVID closures are going remote like a snow day, where it's invested in the superintendent to make a decision, are the conditions such that schools can come to campus? Um, but like I said, there are a number of things we have to partner with Will County Health. Um, outbreak is, outbreak is one of them.
Do we need to, um, enhance the, uh, staff in that, this area that could help? I mean, because, I mean, poor Tony and your, your crew, it's, uh, I mean, is there, is there a staffing resource we should commit something to, to help, help do this, because it's, it's not going to get easier?
Right, it's not. My, my concern that I sent to board members, you know, a couple, that, that is one, right? Um, I'm, I'm concerned about the burnout, but I'm also concerned about this is, this, in this particular case, this is a weekend job. You know, the contact tracing and the symptom, um, uh, tracking doesn't say, oh, it's Saturday and Sunday, sorry. Um, so I am concerned about that. Um, you know, I'm also concerned about our, our staffing resources. The board has been very wise with more task force teachers. As we get stretched, you've also been very wise to be flexible and permit, for example, someone who might be at home with symptom tracking to kind of beam in to their classroom. But I am concerned, and, you know, it might very well be that we'll come back in November with a request here for additional personnel. I am, as I said in my email, I'm worried about stretching people too thin, particularly, I'm worried about Mr. Candari, he's very capable. I'm worried about Carly, uh, Maroni, our certified school nurse. I'm also worried about Deanne Coran, um, at, uh, Central, who is really responsible for that whole building, um, you know, as you said, Mr. Eyes. So we're, we, we will likely be bringing back some kind of staffing, um, recommendation to you in November.
But that, I mean, then that pushes the availability of finding someone here into December now. I mean, is no way we can move that forward?
We could because you've authorized, why don't you go ahead, Tony, you've also authorized additional health aides.
Yeah, that's what, I was going to say, the health aides who have been in the buildings have done a great job taking over some of the day-to-day tasks from, from our three nurses. So that kind of frees them up to do the contact tracing as they need, um, and as it arises, and, you know, making the phone calls home to the parents and things of that nature. So, um, the health aides that, that the board approved have been vital to us moving forward.
And you authorized us to, to add additional health aides, so we might keep moving along on that, on that front.
I'm not sure you want to wait till the third week of November, then you get Thanksgiving, and then you're going to, finding the people, you know, it's, it's great to want someone and agree, okay, we can bring someone on board, but finding the right person is not necessarily going to happen right away.
Yeah, so far we've been very fortunate, we have, we have not had a difficult time hiring. And the main, and here's the main reason why, is I think it's the board's wisdom where, you know, for example, we hired additional health aides, but we went to remote, we didn't furlough those health aides. So what I have found is we have a very good brand in the area with substitutes and with CNAs who are health aides. Um, where the difficulty is that I worry about with Mr. Candari and, um, with, uh, Mrs. Maroni, and I think this would have to be, you might see Dr. McBride, Dr. Greenin, Dr. Green, we're doctors of education, not medicine, is just administrative savvy in, in explaining things to people. You know, that's not something that a CNA is ready to do when you're explaining. Today I had a parent who worked through the entire chain, a student who was symptomatic, we had to put on symptom quarantine. The parent had talked to everybody, was absolutely assured that this quarantine didn't even happen, so eventually came to the superintendent and just, I think I diffuse that situation from years of being a, a building administrator. Um, that's where we're probably going to have to invest help, and it's probably going to be a lot of the people in this room. You know, that's a really specialized skill we almost can't hire for right now.
Understood.
Yeah, so it's tough. So, but the health aides really do help, you're 100% right. Yeah.
All right, well, thank you. All right, okay, all right, moving on then to the consent agenda items. It's the approval of the consent agenda items two to number six. Do I have a motion for that?
So.
All right.
I'll second it.
And Mr. Lewandowski, sorry, second six. All right, are there any questions to any of those consent agenda items? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Eyes?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. All right. Next we have the action consideration where the sell and donate used equipment.
Yeah, we have an opportunity, you have a memo, um, from Mr. Thompson to, uh, donate, um, some wrestling mats, some disused wrestling mats to Fairmont. Um, they're in proper condition, um, they're in good, good enough shape for a, you know, if there is wrestling in the future. Also an opportunity to replace a, um, a forklift and sell, um, we have an offer for, you know, basically to buy a, a used forklift. But both these donations and the sale would have to require board approval. Bill, anything else to, to share?
All right, then I just need a motion for that action consideration of to do sell and donate used equipment. All right, I'll make that motion, just need a second.
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 And it's a second by Dr. Shaw. All right, roll call.
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Next, we have the memorandum of understanding to prepare the bid specifications for structural repairs on Central Campus.
Yeah, I can get, you know, Bill involved. This is a follow-on from last month, when we presented the structural analysis on Central. Now is the actual, you know, paneling our architects, DLA architects, to begin exploring this. In a subsequent study, Mr. Thompson has found that that cost could go up to $500,000. So what the board would be approving here is really just putting DLA to work to begin bidding out this particular kind of masonry work. That's what the board would approve. A number of you have raised a question to me as superintendent, in recognizing the cost of repairs at Central. And how do we begin to have a conversation about the cost of those repairs? Because you picked up on the fact that, in this case, we're talking about the structural, which strangely enough is probably the lowest cost, not the major mechanical or the life safety. This is not a vote that the board needs to take, but my recommendation would be either some kind of citizens advisory committee to consider sort of the building future of Central, or the board might want to consider having a short-term ad hoc facilities and finance committee, if the board would like to go deeper into the future of that structure, you know, the historic value and meaning of that structure, to really understand and share out with the board. You know, the board can form a committee, if it would like it, at any time. So just something for the board to consider as well.
All right, thank you. All right, then I just need a motion for that, for the memorandum of understanding to prepare bid specifications.
So move.
I can second that. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives, and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caneva. Roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Okay, next we have, I just need a motion to approve the copy paper bid. Make that motion, just need a second.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Caneva, and seconded by Mr. Lewandowski for the approval of copy paper bid. Roll call.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes. Okay, next we have the press 105 first reading.
All right. Well, if, and board members can either follow along, there's a PDF of the slides in your board docs, or you can follow along on the screen. If Mr. Kundari did not have enough to do with COVID-19, press 105 should be called Human Resources. But in truth, press 105 really is a re-norming of policy related to a change with Title IX. Title IX is the Federal Office of Civil Rights Law that was enacted in the early 70s to create gender equity in schools and colleges. And what has changed is that sexual harassment, very serious topic, has come under the wing of Title IX. And as such, we have some policy work, and one new policy, and Mr. Kundari will help out as we go through, and please just jump in, Tony, with my back to you. We'll go through the slides and what each one of these policies mean, and if you want to amplify anything, if I'm looking at you, Tony, we'll do that. So the first is 2:260, this doesn't specifically speak to sexual harassment, but it's our uniform grievance policy. And what this does is this aligns to the regulations, in essence, to file a grievance, so that we are following what the Office of Civil Rights is now requiring. If an individual feels that there's been an instance of sexual harassment, and would like to file the uniform grievance process in our district, and that's any individual, student, staff, administrator, board member, it is covered. Maybe pause here and kind of get your take, Tony, on 2:265. This is a new policy. A policy did not exist. We, in many ways, are required to add this policy by state school code and federal law. But what this does is it implements the Title IX regulations, but it requires us to do a number of actions. For example, some of the actions we have to take is we have to expand, who are the investigators in cases of sexual harassment? And those investigators that we name have to have specific training, and our plan is to have that training done by our law firm, Robbins Sports. Our additional investigators, in addition to Mr. Kundari, would be Mrs. Kroy, Dr. Green, and Dr. Greenen. Anything to amplify with that, Tony?
Yeah, it's, before, when there would be a grievance filed, it would come straight to my office, and now what they've done is made my office, my level of office, second to the investigators. So first, it would probably go to one of the investigators, then it would come to the complaint manager, and then it would go to Dr. McBride, and then it would come to the board. So that's the order of grievance now. It kind of puts another level of investigation, as Dr. McBride said, that whoever's going to be investigating must be trained. I think Mike Dwyer would be another one, athletic, would have to be trained as well, he would have to be one of the investigators as well, and Stephanie will also be trained when we put that together.
So in essence, the person, Mr. Kundari, who compiles the report, is not the same person who does the investigation. 5:10, already, we have an existing policy. This policy was really just updated to include, in addition to our equal employment opportunity minority recruitment, to include all the appropriate prohibitions against sexual harassment that could occur in the employment process, brings the employment process under the wing of any kind of investigation as well, any kind of claim could be made in employing somebody. 5:20, and again, you know, Tony, just stop me. This is an update, what it adds is workplace harassment is prohibited in this policy, but what it puts in this policy is that update to the grievance procedure that we just talked about. Staff development program, this is probably an important one. This creates, adds a requirement that, and this policy really hasn't changed, and we already do this at the beginning of the year, that we do provide education on what is sexual harassment, the types of sexual harassment, why board policy prohibits sexual harassment, it reinforces that. 5:200, terms and conditions of employment and dismissal, there's really no change, it just cross-references an update in the response to, this is actually nothing to do with sexual harassment. This really cross-references the fact that we've got the 2020 Election Day holiday, so really no change here. 5:2020, substitute teachers, this is a non-sexual harassment change. It extends until June 30th, the ability for retirees to have 120 paid hours, days, or 600 paid hours, even if you're getting a TRS pension, to be a substitute. Very valuable to us.
Yes.
Very valuable, right, Mr. Kundari?
In every way, shape, and form, from our Apex program, to our task force, to our regular subs, we there, it's great to have our retired folks coming back, who still want to help out the schools.
5:30, we are encouraging the board not to, our recommendation is not to adopt this policy, because what it does is it adjusts sick days, vacation holidays, and leaves to accommodate for the Election Day holiday, which on November 4th, 2020, will no longer be part of state school code. So if you adopt this, you'll have to adopt it, then unadopt it. So it's a redundancy. And then 7:10, equal education opportunities. This again, these are protected classes of people, based on race, gender, sexual orientation. This brings, it protects someone filing a grievance for sexual harassment as a protected class.
It also, I'm sorry, Dr. McBride.
Yeah, go right ahead.
It adds a Title IX coordinator, officially Title IX coordinator. That's me.
That is, it's a promotion. 7:20, this updates, you know, and makes sure that everyone understands that these things apply to students as well, very important part of our population, obviously. 7:180, updates for Title IX, our commitments to prevent harassment, intimidation, and bullying, so adds that in the grievance procedure, that someone who files a grievance will not experience those type of things. And then also puts a responsibility for us to update 7:185, the education that we do, and the responsibilities we have for teen dating violence, and housing, cross efforts in sexual harassment in teen dating violence.
Dr. McBride, our global compliance network training that all staff do, there is a training on teen dating violence, which all of our staff have to do at least every other year, so.
So this is the first reading, you know, questions, concerns, anything that, is the temperature of the time, it's a serious topic, and a serious issue, just screening safety for everyone, and dignity for everyone. All right.
Thank you. All right. Next, all right, we have public comments not listed on the agenda. A designated portion of the board meeting is set aside to hear comments on topics not listed on the agenda. A person wishing to speak must sign in and provide all information requested on the sign-in sheet, including the topic they will be addressing. The board president will call speakers up by name, announcing their time to comment. A time limit of five minutes per speaker per agenda topic will be imposed. The purpose of requesting such information on the sign-in sheet is to obtain the correct spelling of the name of the speaker and contact information, which will be used for any necessary board follow-up, and there is one, it is Ms. Debbie Alvarado.
And, Mr. and Mrs. Alvarado, as it says on our website, people with the COVID-19 era can submit via email before 6:00 PM on a board meeting, so what we've done is when folks do that, I go ahead and I just read what they've submitted, so I'll go ahead and do that, all right?
Okay.
This is from Debbie Alvarado, but also Debbie and Randy Alvarado. Good morning. I write to you as both a parent and an educator. First, I would like to thank you for your continued dedication to our students and community. I know that these times are difficult for all of us in education right now, and I feel that LTHS has done an amazing job at keeping our students and families safe. I come to you with a concern about the upcoming plan to increase the school day by adding lunch to the schedule. As you probably are aware, as of this morning, the seven-day rolling positivity rate in Lockport, which is the 60441, is 8.02%. The 14-day rolling positivity rate is 8.20%. Homer Glenn stands at seven-day, 7.95%, and a 14-day positivity rate, 7.74%. We know the good part of what's been keeping our students and staff safe is the constant use of masks in school. Lunchtime would allow a 30-minute time period where students would be in the same space without masks. I know that they are given some distance, but I've also seen some of the classrooms where lunches are being held, and they're small enclosed spaces. The upcoming colder weather won't even allow for windows to be open for additional air circulation. I feel that this puts an unnecessary additional risk for the spread of COVID-19. With the upcoming arrival of cold and flu season, we will see more students and staff with the viral symptoms. As somebody who works in a school, I see firsthand students who come to school sick, despite consistent requests for parents to keep them home. In the schools where I work, this happens on a daily basis. We know that with the holidays coming up, as much as you plead with families to follow guidelines outside of school, people are having gatherings where they are put at risk for COVID spread. As a parent of a family who has been very diligent about staying home, it is extremely disheartening to see pictures of people in the community crowded gathering, holding their own versions of homecoming, and having large parties, all while being unmasked.
Hello?
We know that
Hi, Luann.
Okay.
We know that this is where the virus is spreading. I only have control over what my family does, I cannot control what others do. I do believe that hybrid schedule is working, and I would love to see it continue. I believe that district's dedication to health and safety precautions is keeping our students and staff safe. I question why we'd add another variable, such as lunch, to this system at a time where we are already at higher risk, just because of what is going on around us. Upcoming holidays and increased gatherings will only bring an increased risk. My two sons have enjoyed going to school on in-person days, but both of them have expressed concerns to me about sitting without masks during lunchtime. I respectfully ask that you reconsider adding lunchtime to our students' schedules. If we would like to allow them to keep having some time in person with their teachers, I truly believe that reducing as much risk as possible will help us stay consistent. Again, thank you very much for your hard work and dedication. I truly believe that you have our students and staff's best interests at heart. I appreciate you taking the time to read this email. And I'll contact Mrs. Alvarado with our lunch procedures. I'll share also with her the statement I shared with the board, that we're making, you know, as a district, about the same issue of needing for the community to support the efforts that we're doing here. And I'll also get back to her with some of the numbers that the state is sharing with us, that are a little different than some of the numbers that she has here.
All right, thank you.
I have to call Veronica. I have to go.
Okay.
Luann, you still there? Luann?
Yes, yes, I'm here.
I'm going to push on a little more. Thank you. Wait, is that my number installed? I can't hear anything. I'm trying to get it.
Hello?
No, there you are.
So that was Veronica?
Yeah, I can hear you.
And Luann, you're still with us? Yeah, I think she's too, oh, there it is. Okay, do we have both board members with us?
This is Luann.
Okay, Veronica, are you with us?
Maybe if we both hang up and we call up.
Yes, yep, that's what we're going to do. Ah, okay. Somebody's calling, hold on. Hello?
Okay, I'm back.
Okay, one more, one minute. Okay, Veronica, one second. All right, do I have both board members with us?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here too.
All right, thank you, thank you, Matt. All right, principals report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just to start off, when we wrote this report and turned it in, it was prior to us having kids back in the building. But the last three days have been fantastic, seeing our students walk through those doors. Even though we can't, they can't see our smiles, and we can't see theirs, just the sense of energy in the building has been phenomenal. We want to thank our staff. We know that, you know, the planning and preparation, the flexibility, I know goes without saying, you guys have shown a lot of passion for our kids, and for what we want to do for them, and what we want to accomplish with them. So we appreciate that, you know, the prep time that you guys have put in, and the dedication, and our students have acknowledged it, like they did in our meeting with kids last week in our executive council. So we appreciate that. Bill, your staff has been doing a phenomenal job, we appreciate you. Our APs, John and I can't thank you enough for all the problem solving, you know, putting out fires, and visiting other schools, just to come up with ideas on how we can best keep our staff and our students safe, and accomplish our goals. So we appreciate you guys in the district office, the leadership and the hard work that you guys have put in, to giving our staff resource
Hello?
Okay, Veronica, one second. All right, do I have both board members with us?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here too.
All right, thank you, thank you, Matt. All right. Principals' report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just to start off, when we wrote this report and turned it in, it was prior to us having kids back in the building. But the last three days have been fantastic, seeing our students walk through those doors. Even though we can't, they can't see our smiles, and we can't see theirs, just the sense of energy in the building has been phenomenal. We want to thank our staff. We know that, you know, the planning and preparation, the flexibility, I know goes without saying. You guys have shown a lot of passion for our kids and for what we want to do for them and what we want to accomplish with them. So we appreciate that, you know, the prep time that you guys have put in and the dedication, and our students have acknowledged it, like they did in our meeting with kids last week in our executive council. So we appreciate that. Bill, your staff has been doing a phenomenal job. We appreciate you. Our APs, John and I can't thank you enough for all the problem solving, you know, putting out fires and visiting other schools just to come up with ideas on how we can best keep our staff and our students safe and accomplish our goals. So we appreciate you guys and the district office, the leadership and the hard work that you guys have put in to giving our staff resources, contact tracing, communicating with our staff and our parents. That has been absolutely phenomenal. So we appreciate everyone and their efforts to just get the kids back in the building. So we look forward to bringing the Porter's group back tomorrow and continually to have the success. Want to start off tonight, we did have our parent-teacher conferences, and you heard from Karen. We've heard from the parents. They went extremely well. This was our first shot at a virtual conference, and Matt did a great job finding a program that allowed our parents and our teachers to connect in a very private manner and still allow for time allotment. We did have, each teacher had thirty slots. Over forty percent of our teachers were completely booked for the night. And then another twenty percent had maybe one to three of those thirty spots open. And then we did have forty percent that had about four or more spots. But in that number are our DCs, our different special education coordinators, who have small numbers of students or don't have any students at all. So they were accounted in that forty percent. But like we said, these virtual meetings were very beneficial. The staff were very happy, and our parents. I received several text messages and emails, and I know John did too, from the parents being very grateful for allowing us the opportunity to be able to have our staff meet with them, you know, in this virtual world. And yes, it's something that we will take a look at, is this the best way we should do it, if it's a worthwhile experience in the future? So it was phenomenal event.
On the athletic end of things for our report, as you know, fall sports have been allowed to have competition. Really want to thank again our athletic director, Mike Dwyer, and the athletic department for organizing the opportunity for parents to watch their son or daughter play this fall. You know, not only are we educators, but we're parents as well. We understand how important that is. And we have some of the fall sports who have just recently concluded their season, and we still have some who are ongoing. And of course, we have success to celebrate. Boys and girls golf both had great seasons, finishing second in sectional. And just so you know, in case you didn't, the IHSA with its state tournament series pretty much has capped off the season with sectional play. So in essence, sectional is really the student-athlete state tournament this particular season. So of course, we always look forward to our teams and individuals competing for state championships. But they did, at least they had an opportunity to compete this season, and they capped that off with sectional performances where, again, boys and girls golf finished second at sectional. Just this past weekend, our girls tennis team won the sectional championship and also featured individual and doubles champions. This past weekend, we had strong showing at the conference level from our boys and girls cross-country teams, with the girls winning the conference championship. And they will, both boys and girls will compete this upcoming weekend with the sectional. Also, we have swimming and diving. They will be competing in sectional as well very soon. So the fall continues to have great success, and we can only hope the same for our winter, spring, and summer student athletes, if hopefully they'll have the opportunity to compete. On the activities end of things, a big thank you to Brian Leschner, our activities director, and all of our club sponsor, club sponsors for creating the videos for our activities virtual fair. As you can see in the report, we've had a tremendous amount of views as we continue to try to reach out to students to get them involved and get them connected, especially, of course, this year. So that is going very well. Tonight, you saw just a great example again of our student leadership from student government, from our newly created Student Equity Action Committee, as they continue to do great things and be great representatives of LTHS. We're so proud of what they are doing. We're also looking forward to some events. Of course, we continue to do them within the guidelines of ISBE and the IDPH. But we will have an NHS induction on November twelfth, where we are going to organize this ceremony very similar to what we did for graduation this past summer. So I had a meeting with Sarah Stanky and Nicole Ernst, co-sponsors, last week. We're very much looking forward to giving our students and their parents that opportunity to have that induction ceremony. We're excited for the Porter players, as they're gonna present Shakespeare in the Port on November seventh, and it's gonna be streamed on November fourteenth. So for activities, we continue to offer great opportunities for our students, and we're, again, trying to have as many events as we possibly can. Thanks to Matt Bartley for providing the behavior report. As Carrie alluded to, we just, again, have to give a great thanks to our assistant principals, Matt Bartley, Jen Webre, Trish Serman, as they continue to do, it feels like, everything. And highlighted here with the behavior report is an online referral system that really was needed in years in the makes. And the three of them with our deans did a great job of, this will give our staff not only the opportunity to make those behavior referrals, but it's much more than that. It's also to refer to our deans and guidance support staff to help students with social, emotional needs as well. So it's just another great communication tool that we have and also a great way for us to look at that data via Five Lab. Our dean's office continues to do great things in connecting with kids with a couple of new initiatives. Every Porter Matters is an initiative, an intervention group where deans and also with the help of guidance staff are looking to help students in their own individualized way. We've been having knock-in talks at both campuses as well, where the dean's offices will determine certain students that may need a little bit more individualized attention and another way to reach out to them to see how they are doing. So the behavior report is there again for your viewing. And again, we want to thank everyone for all their tireless work as we continue to move on with the school year.
Also in our section, you saw the attendance reports, also with the fall housing and the dropout and student enrollment reports. As you saw, our attendance is something to celebrate. We are at ninety-seven percent attendance. So I thought that was phenomenal, because that takes into account our remote, our asynchronous, and our hybrid days, our in-person days. But when you look at our dropout, we did have, unfortunately, one student who was a fifth-year senior, who our guidance department worked with and contacted, but unfortunately, due to non-attendance, she was dropped from our books. But we will continue to try to follow up with her to see if there's an alternative way for her to receive her diploma. Student enrollment report, you saw that we had some late adds. So that's why when you saw our six-day count, you saw that we were at thirty-nine oh six. But we have to do the fall housing report at the end of September. So Jen Webre submitted it to the state, and you saw that increase was due to those new move-ins that you saw on the other report. So we are now at for fall housing, three thousand nine hundred and seventeen students here at LTHS.
You talk about the move-ins or the students that laid adds. Do we know if any of those are, there's a lot of talk out there in the community about private school kids who didn't wanna, you know, they decided not to go to, I'll use Providence for an example, in Lewin, enrolled here for the year because they didn't want to do remote learning at a private high school. Do you know if we've not seen any impact of that?
We don't know that for certain, but every year, we get late enrollments coming in from kids who decide not to go back to a private school or other schools, you know, moving into the area. So we have that every year. So whether or not it's due to the pandemic situation, really can't speak to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to point out that Carrie's mask matches her shoes.
I mean, honestly, you know, you did us.
I'm not sure we can all coordinate that well.
You did us proud, very nice, very nice.
We have the maintenance report.
All right, as usual, Mr. William Thompson's put together a crack maintenance report. Anything you want to add, Bill, let me know, but I think the focus is A fields, moving along. If you've gone down Division Street, you can see that we're almost coming to fruition, the hundredth anniversary of that field. We should be in trim. There's been some delays on the final phase of it. We think it's gonna get home here. You know, wrapping up the turf portion, a little bit of, a couple issues we had to deal with there. And then also just with the pickleball courts, we're twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars under the original bid price. That's always good news. So I'm usually there once a day. It's a convenient stop for me on the way to Central. Also, the other big notice that Bill put in here is working arduously with Quest now that we are in the federal school lunch program. That means renegotiating, re-discussing the terms that we have with Quest in order to make just facility adjustments, but also to make contractual adjustments in that the usual contractual sale of food that we have is not usual at all. Also, just to work, we have a great video. I encourage everyone to watch it. Eric made it, but it actually is one of our best videos about how we clean for health, how we check ventilation for your CO2 levels, how we clean touch areas. It's happening right this second. And I, here again, every day that I hear somebody say, "It's so cold in here," during the day, I say, "That's good news," because we know that our dampers are open to a hundred percent, and it will be a chilly winter in both of our buildings. But if you're cold, that's good, probably good sign of ventilation. See a couple other thing, forklift, stair treads, some boilers, checking out CO2 level testing, you know, relative to our boilers. Anything to add, Bill? No, we're just having a meeting tomorrow with Quest. Board questions?
Can I hit something?
Of course.
Special shout out to Bill and his crew. I know we've said it before, but through my office with the contact tracing and, you know, something were to come up, I, you know, get ahold of Bill, get ahold of Tim, Tim Russ, and they're doing extra cleaning, extra deep cleaning in offices and classrooms. So, you know, that's something else that Bill and his crews are doing as well.
Thank you.
And if you look at this wonderful document that I've shared with a number of people, Schools for Health, for the, from the TH Chan Harvard Public School of Health, in the front, it's healthy classrooms, healthy buildings, healthy schedules, it works like a checklist. And you really have to be very proud of facilities, custodial maintenance, because if you walk through, check, 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 check. And this was a national document that came out three weeks ago. So I would say, you know, Bill, you could have written it in August. So, bravo, you did a really great job.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, information report.
Yeah, very briefly, we, after our board retreat workshop on September twelfth, we made a commitment. We adopted a series of goals representative of all the executive council members here in curriculum and support services, facilities and finance, climate and culture, human resources, technology, and communications. And then made a commitment to every quarter, coming to the board and keeping a dashboard of what's our progress. These are three- to five-year goals, but the only way to get to a three- to five-year goal is to take incremental steps. They don't happen without steps. So what the board has in the agenda are the steps that are being taken right this moment. A lot of it is baseline data collection, so that we can begin to see where we're going. For example, in curriculum and support services, it's collecting, what's our present situation? How many of our students did graduate last year with advanced placement, dual credit, dual credit work experience, or an industry credential? Facilities and finance, you have that in the treasurer's report. We're looking at how much cash on hand we have in terms of our month-to-month projection. Climate and culture, that's our principals who are working diligently. By the way, we have some national award winners in this room. I am sorry that Mrs. Christopher has stepped out, Dr. Webre and Mr. Dusterhoff. Forecast Five analytics, which really drives so much of what we do in terms of engagement with students, discipline tracking, attendance tracking. Right now, we have a board that looks at how many assignments have been assigned and how many students are completed that's connected in with Google Classroom. That's really the brainchild of those three individuals working with Forecast Five. And so on this Thursday at noon, in an online conference, they're one of eight projects in the country that have been named by Forecast Five as Project of the Year. So big clap for them.
Congratulations.
Yeah, huge, huge. You know, a lot of times, we, in a place like Lockport, think this is just the way that we're doing it. But every time I get off with my counterpart at Forecast Five, Adam Sobolka, he always says, "I just want to remind you that you guys are way ahead." And, you know, sometimes when you're teaching or you're doing, leading, you just, you don't think that, right? So it's nice for everyone in this room to know that on a national stage, we're way ahead. And a lot of the climate and culture that the focus of math that our principals want to have is getting the analytics to support teachers in their intervention. A human resource, Mr. Kundari really laying out, you know, over the next four years where we'll be with hiring and key commissions. Mr. Dusterhoff looking at the horizon right now. He's doing some data gathering, baseline gathering, what will our needs be, so we can get out ahead of that. And then communications, really increasing, in this case, awareness of our guidance services, a critical service, sometimes not understood by our families, of what can you do with guidance? And Mrs. Wheeler really taking that step to launch a site that has some value added for our families. Just any questions, really? The dashboard is there. We don't have major mountains to move right now. It's just a quarter of taking one step forward.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right, intervention time during remote learning.
Good evening. We just wanted to take a few minutes to not only thank you, but to tell you about what happened during intervention time during remote learning, when we had that hour scheduled in our day, four days a week. So the first thing we did, yep, Matt, you're, okay, I'll just cue you when I'm ready. I'm not ready yet, but okay, it's good to know you're ready. The first thing we did was we created a spreadsheet where department chairs could have their teacher teams input data on what they were doing during the intervention time. Okay, Matt? So what you're seeing is a Wordle. This was, we took all the data that teachers put in, and teachers submitted some eighty submissions of varying lengths, some were about what they did over weeks, some were about at one time, to see what they were doing. And you can see overwhelmingly in this graphic, words like student, time, meet, help, work, and intervention pops up. These represent August seventeenth to September ninth. When Trish, Jen, and I reviewed the data, looked at it, and gendered an activity with department chairs, and we really thought, like, one of the things we wanted to help our teachers with and coincides with our work with professional learning communities was a shift to focus on teamwork. And when we focus on the team, we become more efficient, and we're able to help more students. So, Matt, you can go ahead. So what we did is we created a different spreadsheet, and then many departments created their own to kind of keep track of what was going on. And we kind of highlighted some things that we thought we saw teachers doing. So one was, sometimes teachers were helping students throughout with some procedural work. This might mean helping a student navigate Google Classroom or another digital tool that they were using during remote learning. But also, we wanted to help teachers have a quick clip dropdown for reteaching, reassessing, reviewing, and enriching students in this time. Many teachers started a shift, not just one-on-one with students. That's what we saw a lot in the first four weeks, but started a shift to team approach, how if we know we have a group of students who are missing this concept, maybe I help them, and Jen helps a different group with a different concept, or I work with them on Mondays, she works with them on Tuesdays, that kind of approach. Again, we're still seeing overwhelmingly, teachers naturally want to go and help individual students. So we were thinking about how do we become more systemic? That means all students get the help that they need and more systematic. So that was one shift. Jen's gonna talk about another approach we took during remote or intervention time.
So in Infinite Campus, there's a tool called responsive scheduling, which allows teachers on a day-to-day basis to schedule students to meet with them during intervention time. So that in turn lets teachers be much more directive with their interventions, right? So instead of just inviting you to come and meet with me, I am telling you, you're gonna meet with me at this time on this day. It's important. It's so important, and I'm gonna put it on your schedule, so it's there to remind you, and your parents are able to see it. So using this tool, teachers are able to get students in. So, using this tool, teachers are able to get students in. We're able to track how they're meeting with students to keep attendance. Teachers then have an attendance record of the student being there. And the tool directly supports the group interventions through PLCs because as a teacher, I'm not restricted to only meeting with my students. I can meet with any student who's enrolled in the course that I'm teaching. So, that really supports that dividing and conquering of meeting student needs there. Let me see. If you want to, go ahead, Matt. This is just a couple of screenshots out of Five Labs that show in our limited pilot with a handful of world language teachers, one math teacher, we're slowly expanding that so we can work out the kinks. This is how it's been used so far, right? So, we're able to schedule students in, meet with students, really target those interventions based on what students need, but also get them together in a group, not only so I can meet with more students at one time, but then the students build a community where they're helping one another through that learning process also. And so, go ahead, Matt. So, as an admin team, you know, we're a PLC also, how do we support teachers? How do we use that intervention time or any time that we have to intervene with student learning? And what we heard from teachers is they're really struggling with the students who were not engaging in class. And so, how can we support bringing students in and intervening with that engaging in class? Trish is going to just kind of summarize for you what we tried and would like to try again when we get back to this point.
So, we surveyed the teachers to identify the kids that were checking in and they were checking out of class. They weren't there. They were there, but they weren't there. So, they're not engaged, not absent, but not engaged, not completing assignments, just not participating. I don't know if their parents were in the background making them sit there or what was going on, but they just were not participating. So, we came up with the lists. We got the list from the teachers. So, we had to narrow it down because there were some students on there and we narrowed it down by the ones that were the most popular by the teachers who probably needed a little bit of additional help. So, Central came up with 27 students. East came up with 65. And we got ahold of the Transportation Department and they built a new transportation schedule and we brought them in for four days. The counselors did contact the students and the parents to let them know that they will be attending and be on campus during these four intervention days. So, what we did is here at East, we grouped the students according to content area. They were in, I think, three different rooms, maybe something like that. And then at Central, we had them all in the cafeteria, say 27 kids. And at Central, I used Beth Hasso, who is, has been our math tutor for several years, be the lead on that. So, the students were there during their Porter Day and their LTHS Day. So, they were in their classes online with the support of teachers and staff right in the room with them. So, during lunch study hall, though, on the first two days, counselors held individual meetings with the kids. They talked about homework. They talked about their needs, that sort of thing. On the second day, they did group lessons, the counselors did, and they were talking about how to manage remote learning and email management and time management. So, they went over all of these things while they were in there during their lunch study halls. And then also, they got tutored a little bit by like Beth or whoever else was in there as far as who Jenny had here. So, what we learned, we learned that we had attendance that was over 70%. Now, I will tell you, some of the kids didn't know the bus was actually going to show up because we didn't get a response from the parent, but, you know, they ended up showing up. So, some of them gave, some of them were a no-show and we knew that. Some parents opted not to have their student come and that was their choice. So, but on an average, we saw really big gains. And we saw that on average, their scores went up at least one letter grade in a couple of classes at least or at least 10 percentage points. So, students that we spoke to said they did, they felt they did better when they're at school. Somebody was on them is what one kid kept saying to me, "Yep, they made me do it and I needed that." They appreciated the opportunity to come to school. The parents were so appreciative when we spoke to them on the phone and were able to reach them that we were bringing the kids in to sit there and work with them directly. So, should we, should we do this again? We would like to keep the kids later because we had them leave at the end of their classes. We did not keep them for intervention hour and we think that that would have helped a lot because like Beth could have helped them even more in the math area, things like that. But one just off-the-cuff thing that happened that was kind of neat, it was an accident that happened. Not an actual accident, but what happened, it was an accident. The buses were late one day and it was just a snafu on the timing. It just happened. So, at the freshman center, the two deans took the kids on a walk. So, they walked outside and they're doing laps around the building. And then Beth got ahold of all the PE teachers and said they did their hours of what's program. Thank you. Strava. And so, they, if they were missing a lesson, they actually got credit for that. So, it, what turned out, we were like, "Oh, my gosh, the buses aren't here." Turned into a positive things for some of those kids because they weren't doing their Strava workouts. So, you know, it was, that was a really nice part of it.
So, what do we do now? Because now we're in hybrid and we don't have this four hours a week designated for intervention time. So, we hope to continue to encourage teachers to work through their PLC times to make most efficient use of their time and hopefully to help more students. Teachers are always free to do intervention work, whether in teams or individually during RLC time at their discretion. We have hired or in the process of hiring a math tutor and an English tutor on, for Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. And they, we can use responsive scheduling to schedule students when they're home that day to meet with the teachers for an intervention. So, we're working just to build the schedule. Again, we have the capacity that we could bring students who are not engaging onto campus on Wednesdays when they're not used to coming on campus. And our counselors did a great job of running some programming to meet the needs of their students. But overwhelmingly, we want to continue to monitor the data because the data is what tells us, hey, we need to go in and stop and do something or that something we're doing is working like the data Jen showed you from Five Labs. So, I just want to say again, thank you. Thank you for approving that schedule and giving that time.
As you can see, the capital project expenditure and interfund transfer summaries. Thank you again to Stephanie Corey for giving us that information. All right. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session to confidentially discuss collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees under Section, Chapter 5 ILCS 120/2C2 and litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting under Chapter 5 ILCS 120/2C1 and the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or chapter of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under ILCS 120/2C1. Make that motion?
So, I move.
And seconded by Mr. Ives. Roll call.
Lewandowski? Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Camino?
Yes. So, the time, the regular session ended at 9:14 PM and at this point, we'll take like a five-minute break.